Welcome to the Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the meeting, everyone. One note today, Commissioner Cheddar is not with us, so Commissioner Tennyson will be a voting member tonight. With that, any additions or changes to the meeting agenda today? No, seeing none? Can I get a motion in a second to approve today's agenda?
Motion.
A second.
We got a motion by Kalberg, second by Tennyson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Today's agenda is approved. That, item number three, approval of the Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes. Any changes, deletions? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Ringstead and Kalberg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting minutes are approved. Tonight, we have two public hearings. One of those is a variance request. With that, behalf of my fellow commissioners and staff, I'd like to welcome everyone to review the procedure we'll use tonight. First, staff will present its report on the request, and the planning commissioners will have an opportunity to pose questions. Next applicant will have the opportunity to address the commission, and commissioners can respond to the applicant with comments and questions. Following the applicant's presentation, I will open the floor to a public comment. If anyone would wish to address the commission, I'd ask that they please approach the podium, press the red button to turn on the microphone, and then clearly state the name and address for the official record. We please ask that you limit your comments to five to seven minutes. This meeting is the official public hearing, and your primary opportunity to be heard on the matter, the City Council has no obligation to accept further public comment. In many cases, do they not, so please speak up. One of the items of tonight is a variance request, and the variance request, acting as the Board of Adjustment, has the authority to approve or deny the request without sending the matter to the City Council. However, any affected party can appeal the decision of this board. All appeals are heard by the City Council. If you choose to file an appeal, you must forward your appeal in writing to the Planning Department within five business days from the date of this evening's hearing. And with that, I will turn it over to staff for fourteen-five-hundred Shady Beach Trail variance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As you said this item before you tonight, the public hearing is in fact for a variance application request at fourteen-five-hundred Shady Beach Trail. A lot of our variance requests that we have do involve lake shore properties, and in many cases, they involve pretty unique shaped in sized properties. This is definitely fits the bill for that situation of a uniquely shaped and sized lot. As you can see here from the aerial photo, this address at fourteen-five-hundred Shady Beach Trail is located at the end of what is a peninsula that hangs out into Lower Prior Lake. Shady Beach Trail comes down to the south here, actually winds around, turns around back to the north, and is this looping cul-de-sac here, if you would, that comes out into Lower Prior Lake, so that there's a shallow bay in between the mainland and this area here. And what is proposed tonight is the house that's at the very end of this cul-de-sac and at the very end of this peninsula that hangs out into Lower Prior Lake. So the property is not quite nine thousand square feet, eighty-nine fifty-eight square feet, and it's zoned R1 low-density residential, and obviously is within our shoreline district since it's on the shores of Prior Lake. The applicant tonight's requesting three variances. I'll go into a little more detail, but they're listed here. First one is from the lake setback or the setback distance to the nine oh four to the structure. They're proposing a twenty-five-foot variance, or basically half of what the required fifty foot is. The impervious surface maximum is thirty percent of the total lot area above a nine oh four elevation, and they're proposing thirty-seven and a half percent. And then the other one is the vehicular access elevation for a floodplain. And before I switch the slide, I'll just explain that one quickly because I have it on the screen here. That one is due to the fact that our floodplain elevation, which sits at nine oh five point nine, or nine oh six point nine, actually, basically it's saying that it shouldn't be any lower than two feet below our floodplain elevation, so that if you were driving a vehicle into the area, the access to the property would not be lower than two feet of the Prior Lake floodplain. In the case of this entire peninsula and this whole cul-de-sac, the street has been at that elevation, this nine oh five point three or around that elevation, for the better part of more than a decade, or I'm sorry, more than at least a half a century, actually. These houses were built in the nineteen fifty's. A lot of them were cabins at that time, but that's when this area of Prior Lake was developed. And so you may recall that when we did have floodwaters in two thousand and fourteen, this place was inundated a little bit with those floodwaters along the street areas. But at this time, we haven't upgraded any street improvements, so pretty much this is their access into the site. So that's why that variance is there, because if this was a street built today, we would be building this street a little higher elevation, obviously, for this property to get into. More so that floodplain ordinance code is there so that we don't set new standards for new streets and new properties that are being constructed below that elevation to get into the access. So to look first at the existing site and the existing house that is there today, the existing house, a little bit more of a sprawling house. It is basically the nineteen fifty-five existing house that has been added on to with a garage and some various additions over the years to modernize it into a more four-season house. It has pavers on the backside of it, as well as some extensive decking system. It also has a very large driveway. That driveway is this whole area that you see riding here, goes all the way over here towards the nine oh six elevation. It's much wider here as it approaches the cul-de-sac of Shady Beach Trail. And so there's a lot of impervious surface involved with this area. In fact, looking at the impervious surface numbers, this area's got closer to sixty-five to seventy percent coverage of impervious surface on the lot, when you're counting up the pavers, the house, the driveways, some of the other sidewalk areas that are included with the property. So what the applicant's proposing to do is to basically restart with a new housing pad, new driveway, removing the pavers in the decking area as well, and basically regrading the lot, making it a little bit more efficient, not only to the floodplain, but for the housing pad generally overall. So as you go to the proposal, the applicant has selected a house design that's more centrally located on the lot. You can see the driveway as it comes out is much more narrower at twelve feet as it approached Shady Beach Trail, so it's a lot more linear area, so reducing the driveway considerably and eliminating quite a bit of hard surface there, removing the pavers, removing the decking system in the back. They would probably most likely look to put some other landscaping and some platform decks that are more at-grade. Those decks do not count as part of structure setbacks, so you can put more of a platform in the backyard to do that for some sitting areas. Usually advantageous on that, especially with these impervious surface variance lots, because the decking material is not impervious surface, whereas if they used a patio, that would be impervious surface percentages, and so the applicant's aware of not looking to put any paver patios in the rear yards along the shoreline of Prior Lake. So as you can see, the house is put a little bit closer to the side property line. Five point eight three feet, actually, would be their minimum setback, given this house, because they do have a longer wall here, but they don't need a variance to this. This does meet our city code from a house-sideyard setback standpoint, but what they're looking at more is the lake shore and the setback distance to the lake. I'll go back one slide, and as you can see, the existing house, as it says today, is about eighteen feet as its closest point to the lake, but it does sit around that twenty-three, twenty-two, those ranges of setback distance as you go around the existing house. So the newer house, the proposed house, pulls that back a little bit further from the lake, so it's thirty feet on the north side of it. You can see twenty-seven and a half here, as close as twenty-five on this side. And then, as you can see, the other houses in the area have very similar setback distances to the lake. So the applicant was choosing to mirror what is more within character of the neighborhood here as far as setback distance to the lake, and trying to bring the house as far as they could to the interior of the lot with bringing that proposed design. They even show kind of a stair-stepped-back house design as the nine oh four comes around here on that area as well. This right here in front of you is just a conceptual rendering that the applicant has provided us. Again, it's a two-story home, but this house, as I mentioned, with the floodplain access, the house has the same situation in looking at a lower level. It cannot have a lower level because of the floodplain situation. So when you're looking at these types of houses, you need to build a multi-story type of situation to get your square footage in the house. In other words, they don't have a basement to put storage in or other aspects of that. So that's why the house design looks like this and to be a little bit bigger in the floor plan. In some cases, we do see these a little larger floor plans that might include an impervious surface variance for the rationale or reason that they can't get square footage on three floors, or at least a lower floor plus two main floors, because of that floodplain requirement. And that's something that we're very firm on, as well as FEMA is, we would not allow a finished basement today in the actual floodplain to be constructed for a new home. So looking at the variance criteria that's before you tonight, it's the same criteria that we use to analyze all of our variance requests. There's four set criteria here, basically that variances shall only be permitted when they're in harmony with the purpose of our code. They need to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. They're granted when the applicant establishes what we call practical difficulties, and those difficulties as a result of the shape, size of the lot, the lot conditions, the general character of the neighborhood is not altered, and economic considerations or costs are not the alone thing that constitutes the need for a variance, because something might cost too much to do otherwise. So when looking at those criteria before you and the house design that the applicant's choosing, staff does support this design, as you saw in your report tonight. We do feel that the house is of a reasonable size, even though the variances do show to be seven and a half percent above our impervious surface requirements and as close as twenty-five feet to the lake. We feel the applicant has chosen a reasonable-sized house and put it in a location that best suits that property. The longer driveway is part of the reason that constitutes a little bit more impervious surface that you would find on a typical driveway, but the applicant is choosing a design that's drastically reducing that driveway width and area as much, but they just can't bring it forward to reduce that driveway any further, because then it would make a closer setback and pinch that corner as well. So with that, the applicant is here tonight if you have any questions for them, and we'll take any questions you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I have no questions. Commissioner Kalberg?
Where is the point where the vehicular access is below the floodplain? I don't understand that point.
Sure. Commissioner Kalberg, basically it's at the cul-de-sac exactly. This radius here, it shows at a nine oh five point three, so the street itself is actually below that vehicular access as it sits today. So basically where the driveway meets the street is the low point. They're raising the grade coming up from the driveway, so the house driveway, as it runs across nine oh six here and gets higher, that area is all going to be set out of the floodplain. The house will be out of the floodplain, will be built to floodplain standards. So in essence, if we had a hundred-year flood event, similar to what we nearly had in two thousand and fourteen, these houses, this house would be elevation high enough to not be impacted, although the street might once again be impacted, but again, the street's been there for the better part of a century, so.
So the solution to that problem would be to raise the street?
That is correct. That would be, the long-term solution would be to eventually raise the street and consider that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just have a question on the platform deck setback. Are there any existing setbacks from the nine oh four for platform decks?
Commissioner Johnson, yeah, that's a good question. So platform decks, by definition, both from a building code perspective as well as our city code, is a deck that does not have a floor elevation of the decking to be above thirty inches off the ground, and it cannot be attached to another structure, so it couldn't be attached to the house or garage or building. By doing so, they don't need to have a building code requirement to have a building permit. They can be placed, you know, on floating footings themselves, and since it's not defined as a structure by both our building code and our city code, it doesn't need to meet those structure setbacks, that including the lake shore. They cannot be built over the nine oh four, but they could be built up to it or nearby the nine oh four elevation. As I said as well, they're not impervious surface, so a lot of people utilize them as a possibility for a sitting area when they're pinched for impervious surface limitations like this.
And then is the existing decks, I believe, were counted as part of the current impervious surface calculation because they are attached to the house?
The existing decks were counted because in and around some of those existing deck areas, there are some hard surface areas below them. As I said, this kind of has been modification over the years and remodeled, so what was once more hard surface and patios, they started converting to decks. Sometimes you cover up a patio with a deck and those type of things. The applicant, I'm sure, can go to a little more details, but I believe they're planning to remove all of that material from the site.
Okay. No further questions?
Commissioner Tennyson?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Finstermacher?
My only question is more of a curiosity, I think, but the access going to the Shady Beach Trail, it appears it's going across the neighbor's property, and I had noticed in the discussion, the report, there was mention that the neighbor is a part of it, but I'm just curious, with that going across the property, is there normally a access easement required for that?
Yes, that's a good question. We are in talks with the applicant on that through the building permit process about looking into acquiring that type of an easement situation. Now, in some cases, I'm obviously not a legal attorney myself, but there are situations where you have access, and it's been there for quite some time, that those types of prescriptive rights are set for access through an area. But the applicant, as mentioned in the narrative, has been in discussions with the neighbor. I think they said the neighbor is actually in favor of it, or likes the fact that the driveway will be considerably reduced across that property.
And further with that, is that when a neighbor's driveway comes across your property like that, does that account against your own impervious surface?
Yes, it can, and I think that's the very reason why the neighbor would be in favor of reducing that impervious surface as it approaches across that property onto this site.
No other further questions?
And Commissioner Ringstead?
No questions.
Would the applicant like to address the commission on anything? Please press the red button and then state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roger Johnson. Pinnacle Family Homes, and I live at fifty-one-hundred Condon Street in Prior Lake. In regards to the easement, we've looked at the title work, and there was an easement that was created. The buyer of the property looked into that before he actually purchased, so there is an easement already for that. It does count against your own impervious, because I have that on my own property, which is kind of unfortunate, but that just is what it is. But with our new driveway, you know, we're going to be positively impacting the neighbor by about three, four hundred square feet of impervious surface that he will pick up. Okay? So in regards to the impervious, we moved the house as far forward as we possibly could to try and lessen that amount of hard surface. I looked like a normal driveway in Prior Lake, you know, if it's twenty-six feet wide, twenty-five feet from the curve would be about six hundred and twenty-five square feet. You know, we're closer to nine hundred and some square feet because of our setback from Shady Beach Trail. So this is about our fourth rendition on plans, trying to get it as compact and work within the guidelines that, you know, were given by the city, so we hope it can work for everybody.
Great. Thank you. Anybody, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
With that, I will take a motion in a second to open the public hearing on this agenda item.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion by Ringstead, second by Johnson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. We have public hearing open. I see no one else in the chambers, so I'll ask one more time. Anyone want to approach the podium? I don't see anybody still, so I think we can take a motion in a second to close tonight's public hearing.
Our motion.
Second.
A motion in a second. Tennyson and Johnson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed.
We have another list.
Nope. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Comments, and let's start with Commissioner Kalberg.
I just want to clarify, the removals include a deck, a porch, a paver area, and a concrete area. The proposed house shows no decks. Are we going to be looking at another variance someday for a deck on this house? Or is there?
Yeah, we could. That'd be good.
I'm not clear on what appears to be some platforms or something.
Yeah, our intention is to remove all the hard surface that is currently there, all decks, all patio pavers. We understand with receiving this variance, if we get it, we cannot do any decks that can be attached to the property. Our intention is to put a platform outside of the, not attached to the building, so that people would have a deck. Not a deck, but a low-line platform, no more than thirty inches off the ground. So, yeah, we understand there's no, we don't have any wiggle room as far as hard surface to deal with on this.
Perfect.
So the platform doesn't count as impervious if it's at the gaps?
As long as we've got a quarter-inch gap in between the boards, we're generally good.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if that, then I have no concerns with this variance. Pass it on to other commissioners. Commissioner Johnson?
I've got, I guess, just maybe more comments than anything. I know Pinnacle builds beautiful homes, and I have no doubt that this will be one of them. I do like the fact that this is an improvement over current situation. I do think that reasonable, you know, square feet is a relative term. I'm also not a big supporter of going too far over the impervious limits. I know that if you've got, you know, a conforming lot, that there's absolutely zero, usually zero room to go over the thirty percent. So to be going from thirty to thirty-seven percent, twenty percent, seems a little bit excessive, but I believe that the lot, you know, as it stands, there's probably not a lot of ways to get around that other than reducing the size of the house. I have no further comments.
Commissioner Tennyson?
The only thing I'd say, I just appreciate the, you know, the improvements with the setbacks and, you know, the impervious service, the best you can do with a lot like this. It's kind of a strange lot.
Commissioner Finstermacher?
I too think these variances are very reasonable and seem to really make an improvement, especially the slot as well as, like, the neighbor as well, so sounds like a good solution.
And Commissioner Ringstead?
Agree with all the previous comments. Eighty-nine-hundred square foot lot presents challenges by definition, and when we see a reduction in impervious surface beyond that, it looks like a win for everybody, so I'll be supporting it tonight.
Great. With that, and I also want to point out that we did meet all the normal standards for our variances. So with that, I will take a motion in a second to approve the variances for fourteen-five-hundred Shady Beach Trail Northeast with listed conditions.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, Kalberg and Tennyson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. With that, we will go to item four B text amendments, Prior Lake City Code Sections eleven forty-two and one forty-four. Turn it over to Casey.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. So a little background, this item, or some versions of it, has been in front of the Planning Commission over the past few months. It started as a result of staff identifying a few challenges with commercial buildings that were proposed for Prior Lake that didn't meet our current design criteria, and in a couple of these examples were buildings that were built in several other communities. So as staff, we felt it was time to take another look at our design standards. We brought that to the Planning Commission during their October twenty-fourth meeting. Commissioners discussed potential revisions at that meeting and ultimately approved a motion directing staff to initiate proposed amendments to Sections eleven forty-two and eleven forty-four. The Planning Commission also held a work session on November fourteenth to discuss potential amendments, and with that direction, staff prepared the redline changes that are attached to your reports. So the only real change in eleven forty-two was removing the Town Center Design Standards entirely and placing them in eleven forty-four, which is our architecture standard. So the Town Center, the Commercial, the Industrial, and the Multifamily standards are now all proposed to be located in the same place. The meat of the changes was in Section eleven forty-four, so attached to your reports, you had a redline document showing all the changes. It was almost entirely redlined, so we also attached a clean copy, maybe for easier review. Eleven forty-four, as it exists today, includes a combined design standard category for multifamily, commercial, and industrial properties. We are proposing to amend that, so there is one section specific to multifamily, one section specific to commercial, business, park, industrial, and then also adding the Town Center Design Standards from eleven forty-two into this section. Previously, eleven forty-four only had a reference to where the Town Center Design Standards could be found elsewhere in the code, so it just kind of cleans it up a little bit to put them all in the same location. So I'll go through each of the multifamily and then the commercial and the Town Center, the primary changes. So for multifamily, we created its own section, eliminating the commercial, business, park, and so some of the language that was in there related to types of roofing materials, outdoor storage areas, fuel tank, canister regulations that didn't apply to multifamily were removed. We are also proposing that fiber cement siding be added as an approved exterior material that's not previously listed, provided that no more than fifty percent of any exterior wall abutting a right-of-way, or no more than seventy-five percent of a wall that does not abut a right-of-way, would be that material. Architectural accent materials, we're proposing prefinished metal or wood that we see from time to time would be allowed, provided no more than twenty-five percent of any individual wall. We added a few exterior materials that would be prohibited, plywood, reflective or mirrored glass, aluminum siding, vinyl siding, that were not previously in there. And we also proposed adding a color section. Previously, no color regulations are in the code. This would require subtle, neutral, muted building colors, allowing for bright primary or accent colors to be on a max of ten percent of the building facades. For commercial, business, park, and industrial design standards, here you see a couple of examples of discussions we've had as staff, commercial buildings that didn't quite meet it, but you do see elsewhere throughout the metro. Again, fiber cement siding, which is the predominant material on both of these, would be allowed up to fifty percent of any wall that abuts a public right-of-way, and no more than seventy-five percent on walls that do not abut right-of-way. percent on walls that do not abut right of way. Accent materials, again, prefinished metal and wood were added as a permitted materials, provided that no more than twenty-five percent of the wall was made of those materials. Again, the same prohibited materials were included as well as the same proposed color For town center design standards, so the current ordinance in all of our town center, which is our downtown core area, requires a minimum of eighty percent of facades to be brick, stone, or glass, and twenty percent can be other accent materials. We are proposing that would provide greater flexibility with building materials and other areas of the town center, not on Main Avenue and Dakota Street. And we, you know, welcome a discussion with the Planning Commission on what area, if you feel is appropriate, what area these boundaries should be. So for buildings on Main Avenue and Dakota Street, staff is proposing to maintain that same requirement of eighty percent brick, stone, glass, and allowing twenty percent of other materials. We did add additional materials for twenty-five percent of the facades just to provide a little more flexibility, whether that's stucco or eaves, architectural concrete panels, fiber cement siding, or color impregnated block. Side or rear facades not abutting public right of way would have a minimum of sixty percent of those principal materials and forty percent of accent. And that's the same requirement that exists today, the sixty, forty. Not abutting public right of way, but we've added a few more eligible materials. So for properties without frontage on Main Avenue or Dakota Street, so the rest of the downtown core, staff is proposing a fifty percent of facades on public right of way shall be brick, stone, glass, allowing fifty percent not, I'm sorry, fifty percent not abutting public right of way could be stucco, eaves, precast panels, cement siding, or block. A max of twenty-five percent of all facades may be constructed of prefinished metal or wood. And what we're seeing a lot of time is the architectural enhancements, they want to use different types of material to create contrast, so we would allow up to twenty-five percent of those. Side or rear facades not on public right of way would have a decreased percentage of thirty-five of the primary materials and up to sixty-five percent of the accent materials. We added the same prohibited materials in the town center and also included a requirement for, including a minimum of two design elements. And that's, so the examples listed here are included elsewhere in our code, they just weren't in our town center yet. So we're encouraging contrasting complementary exterior building colors, accent materials, material textures, window coverage, combination of horizontal and vertical design features, accenting a front entry, varying the roof line, varying the wall depths, et cetera. So the policy for amendments in our city code states recommendations of the Planning Commission and final determinations of the city council shall be supported with findings. In the case of amendments to text, it's the Planning Commission and council should find there's a public need for the amendment or the amendment will help accomplish one or more of the purposes of the zoning code, the comp plan, or other approved plans or policies, or the adoption of the amendment is consistent with state or federal requirements. In this case, staff feels that the proposed amendments would help accomplish several purposes of the zoning code, including maintaining the stability of the business and commercial areas of the community, promoting appropriate and orderly development of business and industrial areas, enhancing the aesthetic character and appearance of the city, providing effective administration and amendments of the zoning code, which is the act that we're doing right now, as well as a continuing system of review of the code to ensure it can be amended to meet the changing needs of our community. In addition to that, staff feels the proposed amendments will help achieve the following objectives that are identified in the city's twenty forty vision and strategic plan under the desirable and sustainable development goal, including intentional land use planning that facilitates commercial development for an expanded tax base, preserving and enhancing Prior Lake small town feel, and exploring ways to encourage downtown as a vibrant destination. So in summary, the Planning Commission should review and discuss the proposed amendments, provide any comments, and make a recommendation to the city council for final approval. And city staff would welcome any suggestions from the Planning Commission related to the proposed amendments, whether it's materials or areas. And I guess with that, I'd just be happy to open it up to discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Very detailed. I think it's good changes. Let's start with Commissioner Johnson.
I have no questions. I think this is a great proposal. It's well laid out, well thought through, and is a nice update to include newer building materials, which I think have a good look to it. I think it also affords a little bit more flexibility and hopefully will help to drive more commercial construction in downtown.
Commissioner Tennyson?
You know, I agree with everything that Doug said before. The one question I have is about the ten percent on the secondary colors. How did you land on ten percent? I'm just more curious.
Yep. Ten percent was selected if there is a certain franchise color sometimes businesses have.
Like T-Mobile is a good example, it's bright pink, right?
Yep. They would allow a use up to ten percent. It's just a number we picked.
Okay.
To avoid an entire wall being, you know, neon green or...
Sure.
Yep.
Commissioner Finstermacher?
I think all these changes seem pretty reasonable. I wasn't at the previous discussions, obviously, but they seem pretty reasonable.
Commissioner Ringstead?
Commissioner Johnson stole my two bullet points. Agree completely with the flexibility that will give the city and potential projects that may come to town using the newer and better building materials that are available now as opposed to ten, twenty, thirty years ago. So I think it's a great document to put before the city council.
Great. Commissioner Colberg?
You folks have done your homework again. Appreciate that you have clearly included the comments that we have submitted earlier. The consolidation of the sections as you continue to do this throughout so that you don't have to repeat things. So I find it certainly meets with the requirements of the policy.
I also feel this is going to be good changes. With that, I will take, well, we'll have to open a public hearing. So I'll take a motion and a second to open the public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone in the public want to comment on this item? Councilwoman Churchill? No? Okay. I guess we got no one in the audience that wants to comment on this then. So with that, I'll take a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that, then we will close the public hearing. And with that, then, we already kind of dig comments, so I think I can just go to, can I have a motion and a second to recommend the city council approve the amendments to Sections eleven forty-two and eleven forty-four of the Prior Lake City Code?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Tennyson, a second?
Motion.
And second by Colberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With that, I see no old business or any new business or announcements?
Just one announcement for the commission. At this point, we don't have any applicants, applications for consideration at our February meeting. So stay tuned, there's still a couple of weeks before the deadline to submit for that, but we'll notify the planning commissioners if there will not be a meeting in February.
Great. With that, I will take a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Ringstead, a second by Colberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.